It is 6:30, November 15th, 2021. We'll call our special work session, Little Falls City Council, to order. We do have a quorum. We're all here. Public forum. Individuals may address the city council about items on the agenda or not included on the agenda. Speakers are required to state their name and address for the council record and limit the remarks to three minutes or less. Speakers are requested to frame their comments around items that fall within the authority of the city council. Generally, the city council will not take official action on the items discussed at this time, but may place the item on file, take the matter under advisement, refer the matter to staff or committee for a future report, or direct the matter to be placed on an upcoming agenda. Would anyone like to speak? Do we have anybody online, John? Okay. Bill discussion. Anyone have questions with the items in our...
Yeah, Mr. President, I'm just looking at the monthly budget, looking at some items that are over budget. There are some smaller ones. A couple of larger ones, workers comp and the EDA professional services seem to be pretty far over budget, resulting in some pretty good costs. Otherwise, things, I think the budget itself overall looks good. The airport revenues seems to be doing well, and the Gulf revenues seem to be doing pretty well. I hope during our budget session, we can take a look at those things that are a little over budget in our, from last year, and hope we can deal with that.
Any questions with the bills? Consent agenda item discussion. Council information-only items. Little Falls Fire Department Relief Association. Hello?
Hello. My name is Chris Ambul. I'm the president of Little Falls Fire Department Relief Association. So, Mayor, council, staff, thank you for having us here tonight. We're here before you tonight to discuss the Little Falls Fire Department's pension and request your support in the 2022 pension increase. Next, if you would. Just kind of a quick overview. Our plan is a lump sum plan structured as per guidance by the Office of the State Auditor. It's primarily funded through our investments, shown in blue. Those investments are owned by the Relief Association and managed by Parr McKnight Financial. It is a, you know, it is public funds, but it's managed through the Relief Association. The plan is also supplemented annually by both state aid, which is shown in orange, and that in 2020 was $85,141, but it does average increase of 3.5% per year. It's also supplemented in gray, as you see up there, is the supplemental state aid, and that was $18,158 in 2020. That one remains somewhat stable. And the city contribution is shown in yellow, which is the $9,000 annually that the city provides to us for our retirement. Next slide, if you would. City of Little Falls has some pretty important roles in our pension plan. They recognize and allow the fire department pension plan to exist, and they back the 90% requirement, which I think is one of the most important things for you as a city council to consider. Whereas the plan has to have a 90% funding ratio, that means of all the fire department members, the benefit must be covered at 90%. And that would be, the only time that would ever be paid out is a catastrophic event that we lost the entire fire department. So even though it's highly unlikely, it's still a requirement to the Office of the State Auditors and how our plan is set up. So to combat this, the city and Relief Association have historically tried to keep the balance near 100% funded, which I'll further explain in a couple slides upcoming. Also, the city provides two Relief Association board members from your council for advice and oversight, and one city official, the fire chief. Next slide, if you would. So in talking about why we're reviewing the pension benefit, there's some, the benefit to pension review is volunteer firefighter retention, which is pretty important nowadays. There's an average of a 15% drop of firefighters under the age of 40 in the United States. Young people just aren't joining the fire service anymore. Busy lives. Retention of experienced firefighters has grown difficult because of growing personal demands and people's personal lives. And the cost to train, which is a city cost, is about $7,000 per firefighter, and that's a NFPA average. Volunteers make up about 72% of the nation's firefighting source, and the pool of volunteers is shrinking, so retention is a crucial cost-saving step for the city. Next slide, if you would. So this graph is kind of, I guess, the important thing to discuss. This is, represents three things. I'll go over the line in blue is our fund balance. That's how much, that pie chart that was shown early on, that's what our fund represents yearly. The fund liability is, that is in orange. That's when I talked about that 90%, that is 100% of fund liability, meaning if every firefighter died today, that's what you as a city, or I'm sorry, is what our pension fund would have to pay out. But the most important line on here is the gray line, which is the city contribution threshold, and that's that 90% that the city basically backs of our pension relief. Well, the most important takeaway from this is to make sure that our orange line never crosses the gray line, because if it does, that would be a point where the city would have to pay out and support our, our fund to keep it at that 90% as required. Historically, the Relief Association and city have tried to maintain as close to 100% mark as possible. As you can see in the graph, we've kind of ignored that for the past two years, which is why we're here today to talk to you. Next slide, if you would. This is a historic, a history of our investment fund. This chart's from Parr McKnight, represents our investments over the last 10 years. And there's a couple things, and the reason I put it on here, why I wanted to bring to your attention. 2015 and 2018, those show large, sometimes multiple personnel retirement draws, but it's important to know that these do not reflect the fund versus liability balance that I showed you in a previous slide. This is just a simple dollars in, dollars out thing. This draw removes, it not only removes money from the account, but it also removes the liability, which was that orange line I showed you earlier. So the important takeaway of this slide, or the most important takeaway, in my opinion, is that this balance has averaged a 5.8% increase in our fund since 2007. Now, if you recall, 2007 would include the 2007 to 2009 Great Recession, which is arguably the most significant downturn in U.S. markets since the Great Depression. So we were able to keep stable through that, which is pretty important. Next slide, if you would. So our request is broken down into four-year increase, and this is to provide not only the increase to bring us up to the 100% marks, but also for retention-based reasons for the fire department. As displayed on the follow-on slide, this, our initial request, which you see is 2022 of 4,700, falls well below the contribution threshold and actually falls below 100%. So we're asking for that. The reason we leave this tiered level request is it's designed to retain seven firefighters that are currently eligible for retirement. And the reason why we're asking for it to end and come back and reconsider in 2025 is because of the fact that the sunset date will revisit our pension amount falls strategically when we have seven more firefighters that are, you know, on the cusp of retirement or eligible to retire. And also, an increased pension amount can be used as recruitment for firefighters as we fill our ranks, as we have turnover and attrition. Next slide, if you would. So this is our initial, this is a 2022 request. The two lines that you see, the gray, which is the city threshold line, and the blue, which is a fund balance, are flat line because this is just our estimated for 2022. What the, the mark shows, the orange line, is the increase, or where we're at is percentage of funding. And as you can see, where we're at right now on the far left is at 3,900. We're well below our 100% mark. We're asking for the first year to move up to 4,700, which brings us much closer to the 100% mark, which is kind of our goal. And the next slide, if you would, shows, this is our follow-on for 2023 to 2025. And as you can see, those are pretty conservative. Our orange line doesn't even match up with those, which, you know, may trigger us to come back at another time. I wouldn't say necessarily earlier, but maybe in two, three years to come talk to you, depending on fund performance. But we wanted to leave that conservative for a couple of reasons, just to keep, you know, the benefit to the city is if there's any kind of economic downturn, or, you know, we're not committing ourselves out to something that maybe our funds can't stabilize and hold out. So as you can see by this, I think that represents a pretty conservative approach to it. So with that, the next slide, the action requested, the Little Falls Fire Department Relief Association asks the Little Falls City Council to pass Resolution 2021-85 tonight at your council meeting in support of increasing the annual retirement benefit level to 4,700 effective January 1st, 2022, and 200 additional per year until January 1st, 2025. And with that, I'll take any questions you have, or review any slides if I went too fast. I saw 10 minutes was my time, so I wanted to make it.
I have a couple of questions.
Yes.
So you're looking at an $800 per month increase from, for the first one, and then 200 each one after that, right?
That's correct.
And...
No, it's 800 overall, four years. It's 200 per year.
I'm sorry. Maybe I misunderstood your question. What?
Well, you're going from 3,900 right now...
To 4,700.
To 4,700 for that first year. That's an $800 increase.
Yep. The initial increase is to bring us closer to the, as you saw on that one slide where we tailed off with the liability.
Yep.
We're asking to correct that balance.
And then it's 200 each year following that.
Yep. And the 200 each year was projected on that graph where you saw that the, the blue and the gray went up kind of substantially.
Yeah, to keep you 100% funded within that, within the projections of, of retirement.
100% funded would be the blue line, so this orange line, again, those are just projections. We, we, that's why we kept kind of on the conservative end of it.
But this, those numbers are for each year of service, so if there's 10 years at the 4,700, that'd be a $47,000 retirement. What's the require, what's the minimum amount of time a firefighter has to put in to qualify for that pension?
So at 10 years, a firefighter becomes partially vested. At 20 years, they become fully vested. So anything after 10 years, it's just a partial amount that they could get. Starts at 40%, I think?
60%.
60, okay. Starts at 60, and then it's a tiered level going up. And I apologize, I didn't have that form in front of me. But it, so basically, at 17 years, you might see somewhere around 75%. But then, to get 100%, you must put in 20 years of service. Then after 20 years, obviously, it doesn't go above 100, so.
And even at these increases, you never go above that, over that 100% funding threshold?
That's our, that's our target, is to stay...
Stay below.
As close as we can, because it's, it's the firefighter's money, and we want to give them what they deserve. But we'd never want to go to the point where we put the city at danger of having to contribute to the fund. So we keep that 10% barrier in there, and that, that's honestly probably why it was set up that way from the Office of the State Auditor years ago, was to keep that, that 10% buffer for market changes.
And there's some regulations that dictate that, how that has to go, too, right?
Office of the State Auditor controls everything for firefighter pension. I mean, it's, obviously legislators set laws, but they, they dictate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further questions?
Good job, Chris.
Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
I'll hang out in case you have anything during the meeting.
Redistricting update. John?
Thank you, Council President. So with the, with the plan for redistricting, I think our commitment was to move forward, recalling our commitment to move forward with the ordinance change. It is recommended that we do seek public input on that, and I...
At this time, I was looking for input on what level of engagement that we want to have with the, with the community. We certainly can post informational sessions on where, where those lines are in order to kind of keep the numbers, population numbers, or to get them, move the population numbers in, to balance. And we could, you know, certainly go out and do some more active engagement, too, in trying to, you know, make sure that information is available on the website, Facebook page. There's, the link is, is public, so people could go to that same sort of website that I was showing the night of the council meeting, one of the nights of the council meeting, and they can kind of maneuver some of those numbers if they figure out how to use it. I'm actually on a webinar tomorrow that we're, have people from the Secretary of State's office that are going over that, and then I'm going to kind of share what we kind of had to go through to even get to the point where we can make the decision about an ordinance. But I think that would be important, because we still do need to have the ordinance approved and meet the March 29th deadline in order to finalize our, our redistricted lines.
John, can this just be done with a public hearing?
There is no obligation for a public hearing to modify the ordinance. We, that, based on our charter, based on the state requirements, we can, we can modify that simply by an ordinance. That, that's what our charter allows, and our ordinance process don't require a public hearing on that. So it, but we, you know, it is recommended, both by the Secretary of State, the League of Minnesota Cities, that we seek public input on, on maneuvering the boundaries.
Would that be a way that we could accomplish that, though?
We certainly could. To me, though, as I've talked about with, with our town, like, our, and this is an industry trend, too, is that public engagement, just by doing public hearings or public informational sessions, are, is kind of the base level of threshold. Like, is there, are there more things that we want, want to do? Is there more input that you would like to see? I think in terms of when we talked about that night and trying to align a more perpendicular line to, you know, the highway or, you know, east-west line, Fourth Avenue seemed like a pretty feasible, feasible area, but you could go kind of above and beyond that, or in and out of, of different territories. But the, the block groups aren't such that it just, it's easy to just draw the line and get the numbers. You have to kind of maneuver things a little bit on the east end of town to make everything fit. The other piece, too, is, and I hope to, I hope to get this information actually out of the meeting tomorrow, but the requirement on, if you modify a boundary, like a ward, will that automatically require, what level of modification to the boundary automatically requires any constituent, or any elected official to run, even if they're not up for reelection? So based on some number of conversations, it's likely that that's going to be the case for most of our, our, most of the positions. So, but we're in the year in 2022 where five seats are up for reelection. So the others that are really impacted are actually wards three and wards one, because they are actually going to assume more new territory. So they're going to have new voters. Ward one will be losing voters and then gaining voters, but ward three will actually just be gaining voters. And some of the interpretation of the rule are, if you're changing voters, they have the right to, to run. So those are some unquestioned, or those are some decision, or impacts that we don't have answers yet to definitively from, like, the state secretary, Secretary of State's office or our attorneys, but we will certainly seek that out.
President? John, who do we think would truly be interested in that as residents? You know, to, unless they're being required to drive across town to vote, other than that, to them, I don't think those boundaries really mean a lot.
I, I engage with a few people specifically in the area where we, we kind of talked about with that southeastern portion, closest to the western, the western part of the southeastern part of the city, closest to the river on the east side, or, yeah.
Your neighborhood.
West of the railroad, my neighborhood. The west of the railroad tracks and east of the river. And, and they, they didn't have any opposition to the fact that they're, you know, that they would be assumed into a different portion. But that information about polling location, I think, is a great point. And that, that's the piece that I think is really going to be important for us, once, even before and once a decision is made, how, how do we make sure that people know where they get to go to vote? Because it's in, it's very likely that you'll have people that, on one side of the street, they, is a residence, on the other side of the street is a polling location, they don't get to vote there. And that's going to be, you know, that's going to be confusing to, to those folks to say, well, why don't, why can't I go there to vote, when it's, you know, very important that, you know, they can't, they have to go to their, their precinct to, to vote. You know, knowing that, like, here, I work here, but I don't get to vote here based on where I live, so I can't enter the polling place, even on, on election day, even though I work in the building. So is there, I mean, is there more than an informational session, a couple informational sessions, information on the, on our website that we want to do, or do we, you know?
I've had one person ask me a question. That was it.
That's, I've had one contact as well. It would be my opinion that I think we just communicate what we're doing clearly and where people need to vote, and also share, we understand it's going to be kind of messy trying to get through this. And as of right now, it looked like we were kind of leaning towards getting through the next general and then exploring a charter commission. So it's going to be a couple cycles where it's going to be confusing. And I, I, I think for this first go-around, I mean, by all means, I'm certainly willing to listen to people, but I think we just need to make the best decision to get through 2022's election. And then, then with the charter commission, we're really going to be getting the input.
Can we send mailers out in the water bill?
Yeah, that's, I don't know what the schedule is looking like in early '22.
Just of a proposed change in the, in the boundaries?
Or even after the boundaries are...
Yeah, and after, yeah, we would definitely do, yeah.
But before?
Once they're done, then the county will send out a notice of change of polling place to everybody.
Okay.
So they, they will send out a notice. If your polling place changes from one to another, you will get a notice from the county. They're required to do that. We have to, I'm not sure if we do it by resolution, but we have to notify the county of the change in polling place, and then they'll send notices out, yeah.
So just as we did when we changed on the west side from Lincoln Elementary to Bethel Lutheran, like, that, that's required. So it's, we, we aren't looking at changing any of those polling locations. I think they do all fit within the ward boundaries as we're proposing. But it's, to me, like, that one of initiative foundation being adjacent to now an area that's going to be part of Ward Three, that's going to be certainly those neighborhoods, that's going to be confusing for them, the 450 residents or so that, that would be impacted.
So when you say, oh, I'm on, when you say informational session, what would that look like?
We've kind of advertised that, you know, we have this, we're going to be talking about this in, this item, and we seek input, and people are welcome to, to come and give their input and ask questions, and we'd be open to answer, you know, providing answers what we have. We've done that in a number of different times.
With what we did with the bridge?
We've done it with the bridge. We've done it with local option sales tax back in 2018. MinDOT even hosted one with the Highway 27 project here. So it's, it's very, various levels of participation. I think the MinDOT one had the most turnout, but that was like, almost more like an open house than an informational session. So that, that really is, is what that, when I refer to that, that's what I'm talking about. But I still would, you know, like to make sure that we, as we share proposed information, like, really reiterate that these are proposed boundary lines and not final, until they are final, because that, I don't want, you know, we get two or three different sheet options out there in front of people, and they're, you know, they can be confusing.
Position descriptions update. Kenny?
Good evening. Nice to see you all in person. So we are, I went through all of our position descriptions, and over the years, position descriptions have changed, and the scoring has changed through it as well. However, employees, I noticed, have not actually been made aware of what these changes are. They have, through normal circumstances, like through going through the council, those sort of changes, but actually making sure that we're sitting down with our employees and they understand what the job changes are over the years, and making sure that they are understanding of what's expected of them, too. So my goal here is every year to update the job descriptions, if there is any, if there are any changes to the role or not, or if there are changes to the role, then we'll update it. And then sit down with the employees and make sure that they understand that this is the, this is how the role has evolved throughout the years, so that we don't have employees working on the assumption that they signed on a job description back in 1992, that's all that they're going to be doing now. So their roles have evolved in making sure that they understand that. So that's what we want to do here. There are 13 position descriptions that have been updated for '22. A lot of them in the regular agenda, this is, a lot of them have been just updated for grammar punctuation, some name changes, not any big, real role differences this year. So the other half of the positions will be coming at another meeting. I didn't want to overwhelm you completely, and we're still working on them. So that's the reason for having all these updated going forward.
Questions?
Mr. President, I got a couple. I, I went through all of the descriptions, primarily focusing on all the stuff in red, right?
Yes.
So I do have, the questions I have are all related to the fire department positions.
Okay.
And so, as luck would have it, the, the chief is in here this evening, so maybe we'll have easy answers. When it comes to, the assistant fire chief was listed first, and it's the same for fire captain and the fire chief. And I'm just curious as to why we would reduce the training and drill requirements for those positions.
Basically, that's written in department policy now. So it's, it used to be 12 per year. Now we require 60% of the scheduled trainings. So we just didn't include it in the job description.
Okay.
It's in the policy now instead.
Well, like, like I said, maybe this would be easy.
And it, there's certain things in the captain and assistant chief job descriptions that aren't spelled out, that are spelled out in the firefighter job description, because they're still firefighters. So I think you have to look at the firefighter job description to get some of the nitty-gritty details of the, those are just...
Okay. Yeah, and not, not knowing that, I would just, by reading what I see in front of me, make the assumption that the, the requirements are less restrictive the further up the chain you get, when I'm quite confident you respond to everything physically you can. And then with the assistant fire chief, and I didn't jot down the timeframes, but I, my question here is, why would we want to make the requirements more restrictive, as in time on the department, time in position? And Chris talked about recruiting and retention. Some of this, I think, you know, if we get somebody that moves to our town from another fire department that has good qualifications, why would we want to prevent that person from applying to a position that is commensurate with their experience?
That's a good question. Did we cross off the...
We did cross off our equivalent experience with another department.
Yeah, we could leave that.
I think that would be appropriate.
Yeah. Yeah, because basically, those are just promotable spots. So that's why that, the requirements are in there for the previous experience. But yeah, that would be...
Right. I, I just picture, and I don't know if it's happened, but with our businesses in town, somebody might relocate, and they're going to go with their primary job first.
Right. It, it could, but generally, it's nice to get people that we've worked with and have worked with us internally, so we know what they're like. Not to say someone couldn't come in and be a good fit, but, yeah, they would have to get hired first to be able to get that promotion.
Okay.
So we can leave that in for different circumstances, but overall, it probably won't happen that way, so.
Right. I, yeah, I understand the possibilities and, and reality.
Yeah.
The other thing I have is, in my opinion, I don't think we should be using the term "bank square" as a landmark. It doesn't officially exist. It doesn't officially exist. We all know what it is. But maybe that should be reworded to the main fire hall or, or city hall, or, or right, the actual intersection.
Sure.
We had that listed for the fire stations in the policy, but I think Annie standardized all the city employees to one location for response times, if that's so.
So then maybe it should be city hall.
It's also in our policy book, so then it doesn't go in the job description?
It does, yeah. So Lori says that it's also in our policy book, so that would be why it transferred over. Yeah, we can, we can do the cross streets.
Yeah. Okay, one last thing.
Yeah.
When it comes to firefighters, I noticed that there was preferred qualifications and I can't remember what the other one, anyway, or minimum, minimum requirements and preferred qualifications, something like that. For the firefighters, we have two different response times listed. And so the way I read that, if we have our interview committee, interview for potential firefighters, all things being equal, somebody living within a six-minute response time is going to get preference over somebody with fifteen minutes. There again, just my opinion, I'm open to opposing views. I, I think our response time should be the response time.
Okay.
Yeah, and that was in there before. I, I guess I don't, that's something that could just be discussed in the interview panel too, it wouldn't have to be listed on a job description.
Yeah, it doesn't need to be called out. I would agree with you on that.
That's all I have, Mr. President.
Anyone else?
Well, I think the ones that I had were pretty much covered.
Any other items? Any constituent messages? We will adjourn until our seven-thirty meeting.